I'd like to call the November 4th town meeting to order, please stand for questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Those of you who are new to our meeting, please put your phones on airplane mode or turn them off or silence them, please, for the meeting. Upcoming meetings, Parks and Recreation Committee meeting will be Tuesday, November 19th at 7:30 PM. Planning Commission meeting will be Monday, November 25th at 7:30 PM there here in this room. Town tree lighting ceremony will be Monday, December 2nd at 6:00 PM in front of the building, which there is also a town program at the Carriage House and stuff, it'll be going on right after the tree lighting. Town Council meeting, the next one, will be Tuesday, December 3rd at 7:30 PM. Any additional meetings or anything anybody has that's not written down? Hearing none, we'll keep on going. Approval meeting minutes for October 7th.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Davis. All in favor of the minutes passing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion carries, five to zero. Police report, deputy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you guys?
Good, how are you?
So, monthly report for October, zero burglaries, one noise complaint, two suspicious activities, one theft, zero juvenile complaints, one fraud, which I'd like to touch on that for a minute. We've had a lot of phone calls to the elderly reporting that Sheriff's Department is, they missed jury duty and that the Sheriff's Department has a warrant for them and they need to pay, you know, money so to go get cards from like Best Buy or Apple Cards. And we've had a spike in those trying to take money from the elderly in town, so if you could just kind of pass that out, it'd be good. Alarms, eight, AFDs, two, zero destruction of properties, five disorderly conducts, they're same two residents. On one, thirteen nine-on-one hang-ups or calls. Opened up seventeen talk cards, twenty-three walking patrols, hundred-and-five patrol checks, zero bike patrols this month. Did a hundred-and-thirty-five stops, forty-two citations were issued, a hundred-and-sixty-five warnings, zero repair orders, parking complaints, zero, parking citations, zero, selective enforcement, seven, and two collisions. Traffic arrests, three, zero criminal arrests, one juvenile, two warrants, zero criminal summons, curfew violations, zero. And pretty much that's all I have for this month. That's good. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Town manager's report.
Good evening, this is town manager's report for September of 2019. I'll highlight some of the areas. Related to streets, staff assisted the contractors with paving Creamery Way, Bunker Hill Drive, Waggoner Lane, St. Joseph's Lane, and parts of Chesapeake Avenue. They also assisted the contractor with the installation of the new sidewalk in front of 101 DePaul Street. And they also prepared for the town for a fallen firefighters' weekend, putting up flags, banners, signs, painting curbs. Related to the parks, they conducted their daily checks, they're in their monthly maintenance checks. Memorial Park has now, the restroom has been winterized. They will do community park after the turkey trot. Related to water, Rainbow Lake is currently below the spillway level at sixteen-point-one feet. The lake quota is still not being met due to the poor water quality from the lake. For water production, we had backwash water of twenty-six-point-four percent. We purchased about four-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty gallons of water from the mount in the month of September. Related to wastewater, we received point-seven inches of rain. In the month of September, the average is four-point-three inches. We currently have a surplus of three-point-three inches over the last six months. In the month of September, we had no spills of untreated sewage and we did not exceed the plant's design capacity at any time in the month of September. The production, we had about fifteen-point-oh-nine percent of the wastewater treated this month was wild water. I will note that we did have a sanitary sewer overflow, excuse me, on October 31st, lost about forty-five-hundred gallons, and that was on North Seaton Avenue at three manholes along North Seaton, Federal, and North Gate, and they both have been reported to MDE as well as the Health Department. Trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of November, and you can see listed below are some of the meetings I attended in the month of September. Staff is currently working on a new website to comply with the ADA requirements for public websites now. We're hoping to have that unveiled early January, February of 2020. And then I received notice that Maloney will be setting up flagging operations at Creamery Road every day this week in order to get the curb and gutter installed. And that's, that's all I have.
Any questions for staff for the town manager's report?
Yes, sir.
Throw down.
The October 31st North Seaton Avenue stoppage, was the cause identified? What caused the?
Rain.
Okay, so it was overflow?
Halloween with the rain. It came down very fast.
Terrific, yep, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ritz.
No, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes, sir.
I don't have any either. Oh, I do have one. Was the manhole installed yet for the?
Yes, it's been completed.
Down East Main Street?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Town planners' report.
Hello, everybody, this is the planner's report for September 2019. I'll also just highlight a few sections, and please let me know if you have any questions. I updated the firewood resolution and policy, bridge letter and cross connection fact sheets per the direction from the board of the meeting prior. For MS4, created the required restoration work plan, which you approved at the last meeting, continued working on the yearly MS4 permit, created street sweeping and catch basin log templates in order to make sure we earn every single credit that we can, and assisted the contractor with the required illicit discharge detection and elimination plan. For permits and zoning, a processed total of thirteen permits, and we also processed nine cross connection permits under Melissa Annias. Continued working with MD, DNR, and logger to obtain MDE stream crossing permit and Frederick County logging permit for Stand Five, and submitted the required forest conservation general plan, which is a new law passed by the General Assembly. And these are my main highlights. It was a busy month.
Any questions for the town planner this time? Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes, sir, just quickly, the Stand Five permit, has a date been narrowed down, like a range of time yet?
Sure, they just received approval, the stream crossing permit from MDE, and the county permit was just approved a few days ago, so the logger will be in to pay this week, and he'll let us know an exact date, and I'll make sure I email the board.
Terrific, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Commissioner Ritz.
Yes, the forest conservation general plan you said was recently passed by the Maryland Legislature?
Yes, so basically what they require now is a plan from us stating where we should, where we have areas to plant, and also accounting procedures for when we receive forest conservation money.
Will we be seeing some potential new ordinances or revisions to current code?
Yes, yes, sir.
Future?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any more questions?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Davis.
Good.
Commissioner Burns.
Good. I'm also good, thank you. Commissioner Commetts. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes, sir, thank you. This past month, I was in contact with staff three separate times I can remember. One was related to the website, I had a citizen concern related to that, it was addressed pretty quickly. The town planner provided a map as per a request from a citizen who was interested in learning more about the lie of the land for the town's boundaries, and town manager was contacted regarding construction on Hampton Valley Road, and that's, let's open-ended, we're waiting to hear from who it is or?
I do have an answer.
Oh, alright.
It was either, so it's not a complete answer, it was either the phone company or it was electrical lines going through the culvert.
Terrific, okay, thank you, that's perfect. Beyond that, let's see, upcoming events, we have the turkey trot on Thursday. Commissioner Sweeney, I didn't want to put these as meeting events, I didn't want to kind of conflict with that. The Friends of the Emmitsburg Library having a book sale on Saturday, they're having a book sort this Thursday night, they need volunteers, they contacted me and asked for volunteers and to advise. Our trail day is Sunday, it begins at nine, it ends at 1:00 PM, free breakfast before, free lunch after, dressed for the weather and for the work. I was able to attend the grand opening for the park, that was pretty exciting, town staff did a great job, it was wonderful to see the whole process through, pretty happy about that. I was able to attend the Pembroke Woods Homeowners Association meeting, provided updates regarding the town and projects in town, the folks were very interested to hear about that. I was also able to attend, and I'm loosely calling this down, the Burns-Davis Youth Baseball Softball Meeting, very strong support for that in the community, my compliments to the new commissioners in their meeting, and I'll leave that at that because I know they probably will want to talk about that. And beyond that, happy November. There we go.
Thank you. Commissioner Ritz.
Yes, I received a few complaints from predominantly Brookfield residents regarding the fire hydrant flushing. We have postings on our Facebook page and our website, I believe it was at one day, one day notice, so more of my comments this evening are to ask the question, do we have a schedule in advance? I know they're twice a year. If they, if we, they are, could we post those notifications a little sooner? That's part one, well, let's just address that one first.
Can I address that, okay. So unfortunately, this year, our advance notice, we typically try to go for a week's notice, the provincial house usually, or typically flushes their hydrants after we do ours. Unfortunately, this year, they flushed theirs before we did, which caused an enormous disturbance in our lines, which made us have to do our flushing faster because there were brownwater complaints the week prior to we started flushing, that was because of provincial house, so in an effort to try to clear the lines up quicker, we went ahead and flushed ours. There was, in talking to Mr. Fissell, there was a lot of dirt, debris, rust in the lines this, this time around.
Yes.
We encourage everybody, we put it out on an alert, we send all the alerts out through Alert Frederick, so if you're not signed up for Alert Frederick, please do, we get that out, text message and email, Facebook and website. Unfortunately, we didn't get enough notice out, it was determined on the Friday. Some notice went out on Friday that we were going to do it starting Monday, some didn't go out till Sunday. We will certainly try to do better the next go-around with notice.
Would it be possible, I know we utilize electronic notification this day of age, but maybe the quarterly water bill before that, like part of the newsletter that goes in there, just like a heads-up at that time?
If we know that far in advance, because unfortunately, the newsletters only go out, like you said, quarterly, so your newsletter would have gone out, we did flushings in October, the end of October, beginning of November. If we have an idea that when we're going to do it, we can do our best, we try to follow with the leak detection specialist also, so we try to flush and then bring him in, so it also depends on his schedule also, and the conditions that the planner in, but we can certainly look at doing better next year, or next, yeah, next year for our flushings with notices.
The question was asked on the website, it talks about the discolored water, like, you know, hey folks, it's, it is safe to drink. Do we have test results to back that claim up?
Well, it's all, it's naturally occurring minerals and sediments in the water. I believe Mr. Fissell went out and tested a couple of them that, and if you look at, we're not the only municipality that flushes their lines, and it's, anywhere you look, it says it's safe to drink. Now, it's not aesthetically pleasing to drink, that's, I mean, that's what we, we put out, and you know, you probably shouldn't do your laundry if your water's discolored, things of that nature.
So if anyone had any concerns, they can certainly contact the town office.
Right, I've had, I've had a couple conversations last week, this week, last week, excuse me.
And then just one final thing, and I don't know, this might be for Commissioner Burns, not Burns, Commissioner Davis with his fire company experience, but the hydrants themselves, we recently passed the cross connection valve ordinance. Do high, are fire hydrants in town have to follow those guidelines?
No.
And if we were to install them on the fire hydrants, would that prohibit them from functioning properly?
I don't believe, so the way these, the cross connection, correct me if I'm wrong, they're put in right by the meter, there are no meters on your fire hydrants, and there's no, there's no device to attach the preventer, the backflow preventer on a fire hydrant. The pressure that's coming out of the fire hydrant would keep anything from going back into the system.
And Mr. Davis might know better about the pressure, but like she said, the pressure's immense on those fire hydrants, so nothing's going to backflow onto those systems.
Yeah, it couldn't be done accidentally, it would have to be somebody who intentionally want to try to do it, and I'd like to see him try to do it.
You do have backflow preventers on your fire, your sprinkler systems and stuff?
Correct.
For the bigger buildings and stuff?
That's correct.
They install them right before the meters also?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's, sorry, I used my comments tonight to utilize fielding those questions, so thank you.
Commissioner Davis.
I'd like to apologize for not being at the ribbon cutting on Saturday, I was out of town, but I hear it was great, thanks to the staff, I'm sure Matty had a lot to do with putting it together, I hear it went very, very well. We did have a community softball, baseball meeting on October 24th, we had about twenty people, ten, you know, we had the kids, a couple kids, and then some interested parents. I'll have a full report on that at the, for the December meeting, and ask for that to be put on the agenda, but it looks like the best way for us to go right now, and Thurmont is very open to it, is go in with the Thurmont leagues, there's, it's kind of complicated, so I won't get into all that, but there are four different leagues, and our big thing is now to get baseball back into Emmitsburg somehow, to get the interest back up and get the fields being used, and then we can, hopefully in future years, we'll, we'll have that interest that we can, you know, branch out in some ways on our, on ourself, but I'll have a report for that, and we can present that next month, and it's, the next meeting will be December 5th at 6:30 here in the, in the office, so, because that'll be after our regular town meeting, hopefully have some answers for the people in Thurmont.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burns.
I got the opportunity to also attend the park opening ceremony with both my children, they were very, very happy with how everything turned out, they were excited to spin on the, the new device, and I think that's the biggest hit right now, especially for the adults as well, because they can spin their children around. At the same time, I'd like to thank the community, you know, really, really see what it's like to be from a small town and from a small community for their support during the difficult time with the loss of a family member. The outpouring of support around the community that time was, was very helpful and was very appreciated for, for the family. Last thing is, learning a lot and looking forward to continue work with the Citizens' Advisory Committee and really trying to make an impact going forward.
I also was at the park grand opening for, it's all-inclusive, is that what it is, inclusive?
Yes.
Which means that adults and parents can go onto the devices with the childrens. There's no benches to sit on, so you have to participate with the children. So that was nice to have, I'm seeing, I mean, all the equipment was really, really nice. I do think that we do need another camera put on the tower to watch that park area because it'd be a shame for anything to happen to it. You know, we have one for the pavilion, but not necessarily could turn, or put one underneath the other one to head towards the?
We're actually getting prices to put lighting and a camera at the playground as well as additional lighting in the pool parking lot.
Thank you. I also want to thank the town staff, all the town, the VFW, the Legion Fire Company, we had an emergency, we had to change Halloween, and it all got changed within an hour with social media. The Fire Company, we was able to move theirs to their activity building instead of the fire hall, so they didn't have all their equipment out in the, in the bad weather. The Halloween was, the, the block party was well-attended, we were, we thought we weren't going to get anybody to come because of the weather, but it was completely full. They had, I think everyone had a good time, we had a parade inside the building. We'll try to plan for that next year, to have that on the, the brochures and stuff we send out, that if there's bad weather, we'll hopefully can change to the activities building, so we won't have to worry about, but we appreciate everybody's help, without everybody helping in the community, we would never got the information out, and everybody got the information because trick-or-treating was well-attended for the next day too on Friday. So I thank everybody in town for all their social media help, without all the town working together, we could have never done it, so thank you. That's all, thank you. Let me see, next. Mayor's report.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner O'Donnell, you mentioned the turkey trot, which says Thursday, it's Thanksgiving Thursday, did you say Thanksgiving? Maybe I missed that. Anyway, it's Thanksgiving morning, it's a wonderful event, still started by Dave Weigalt family and picked up by Commissioner Buckman, and also lately, the Emmitsburg Business Professional Association, terrific event. You can work your conscience off your Thanksgiving meal, run around in costumes and everything, it's a great event. Just to go over a couple of the highlights of my activities for last month, we met with the Wayside Exhibit developers in town, clerk Matty Shaw and I, and I think we'll have something here in the ensuing months, maybe to make a presentation to the board of what the next three signs will look like we're adding this year. Met with Cindy Grimes with J&amp;B Realty about who's, I'm suggesting that she be the listing agent for 140 South Seaton, she met in the office and at the site, the town planner, and later that, October 18th, I'm on the university, Mount St. Mary's University College of Liberal Arts Advisory Council, and we had our meeting, and President Trainer was a presenter, a wonderful meeting. Later that week, I met with, I miss, this is a misspelling, it's George Brenton, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes, I have Brenton here, daughter's a cherry with MS4, our planner and I met with him, and see if we can resolve the tree planting area for that. Let's see, we met with a commercial developer in the office here, we've met with the town auditors, they'll make a presentation hopefully in January to, to the board and get a report there. We met with our, our new attorney, Ms. Powell, and our associate Clark Adams, he wasn't, he wasn't there, but he's here tonight, and we're going to present there. The ESP Dance, Ninth Annual 5K Superheroes on the Run Fighting Through Breast Cancer, they have their final 5K at the mountain, Commissioner Canare, I'm not Commissioner, Mayor Canare and myself made that, where the, started that, the honorary starters that. I introduced Dr. Bernard Franklin to the planning commission, and he was seated appropriately. Going a little further, Mr., let's see, Cliff Sweeney and I went to the Thursday evening Frederick County Maryland Municipal League, Frederick County Meeting at Myersville, and I made a presentation to the MDOT, the circuit riding kind of group that came to Winchester Hall with our planner, that was on October 30th at 7:00 PM. Again, thank you to Lions Club, American Legion, Ambets, and Vigilant Hoes, that was a really a real scurry to get, keep that going, and we, we had a lot of crossfire coming about the weather for the Halloween, it was so successful out there, terrific, and, and the all-inclusive playground grand opening was phenomenal, we had so many people, our staff just worked tirelessly, and they're always around there, our field crew and our, and our office crew, and we had to raise a lot of money, and as I did that morning, I want to thank all the mayors of all the towns that supported me, we kind of have a, kind of, you have to make your presentation if you want a piece of the money that the county makes available for projects, and you have to, you have to sell it, and they, they helped us out greatly this year, we got over a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars worth of money and brought that home, and I want to thank all those wonderful mayors. I think that that's about it, but it was wonderful, Cibotan, Thurmont, you were phenomenal, your assistance and everything, and with that all-inclusive playground, it's just terrific, and you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor said, I did, didn't mention that we did go to the MML, and it's, it's, the MML meeting was on small?
Small cells.
Small cells, which is going, it's coming really fast, and towns, the staff is going to be working on the ordinance to bring before us, before they get here and decide to put it wherever they want to, and we don't want them to do that. So that will be coming up in, on our next meeting or two. Public comment, do we have any public comment? Any? It's Pradeep. You're going to wait to the, is it, you want to speak now, you want to wait till we come up on your meeting topic? Okay. Sarah Miller?
I'll wait till the topic.
Okay. And the other one was, I can't read it.
It's a gentleman back there.
Harleen?
Mr. Phelan.
Phelan?
Robert Phelan.
Oh, Robert, you speaking at the end?
I'll wait until the topic.
Okay, administrative business.
If I may.
Mr. Mayor.
Introduce our, our new town attorney, Leslie Powell, and she's accompanied by her associate, Clark Adams, and she has, you may ask, has a terrific resume, and we're so excited about having her come on and fill, fill the spot John Clapp retired from. Thank you, if you'd like to come up.
Thank you.
I'll be brief, I know you have a big agenda, I am thrilled to have the opportunity to work with you. I love working with small towns, I've represented the town of Thurmont, I think over two decades at this point, and one of the things that is the greatest about representing small towns is how energized and how actively involved all the commission members are and how much you care. And to me, that just speaks volumes for the importance of how we work as, as a community and how we work as a government. I know that you have some new members on your commission, and we prepared a really short, sort of a Open Meetings Act 101, because this is the one place that commissioners and town officials can get into trouble, and it's always, it's inadvertent, but I just wanted to give you a really quick outline of some of the do's and don'ts, and we have a memo that we've prepared and that we'll hand out for all of you as well. So the, the biggest challenge these days for open meetings is the internet and email. And so wherever there is a quorum, in other words, enough commissioners to decide, three, for example, you need to meet in open session if you are going to discuss town business. If you have an email chain, say you request information from Ms. Willetts, that's fine, she can send out the email or the response to everybody, but if then you start getting into a conversation amongst yourselves, it can present a potential Open Meetings Act violation, and so you just need to be a little bit wary about that. And so far, you know, we've been able to keep people from being test cases, the Attorney General's Office hasn't really defined, if you will, what, how close in time these commun- these communications have to be, but one of the things they mentioned in their opinion is that if you're having, if it's like a telephone conversation, you, you just don't want to go there. And so, my strong recommendation is, is that, you know, if you have things that you're interested in, to try to comply with the Open Meetings Act, and just to be very conscientious about how many people you're talking to at any one time. It's my pleasure to introduce Clark Adams. Clark has worked with me for over two years now, and he is a graduate of the University of Virginia, and I am delighted to have him. He is super smart, he is very capable, and if you have a question and I'm not available, I urge you to please ask for Clark, and he will get you the answer. And in fact, he is the one who prepared the memorandum on the Open Meetings Act. So, you can see a little bit about how he writes, hopefully you think it's very clear, and if you have any questions, let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Can we ask questions?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, one of the, I don't know, say, downfalls of the Open Meeting Act, and things of that nature is, if several people are on the email, commissioners are on the email, and a question is asked of, you know, a town manager, town clerk, whatever it may be, what is the rules on that? Because I think the issue is then, how do you play whisper down the lane when you're asking a question of one individual that should be disseminated to all the individuals as well?
Okay. And that is a fine question. And so, if, if you are making a request for information from the town manager, for example, or say, from Zach or, or Maddie, that's fine, and she can answer you, and frankly, could answer all of you, and that, and she, and all of you could be included on the response, and that would be fine. What would not be fine is if you then amongst yourselves start to have a, a follow-up conversation about the topic at hand. That's, that's the line.
Okay. So the question can be asked, if, you know, we're all on one email chain, that a question, or, you know, something was presented to us, and we're directing the question back, not at commissioners, but at the individual who asked, you know, stated the point, that's, that's where I'm asking.
Yeah, I, and, you know, and I hesitate, because I'll, I'll tell you that you can do that, and then sure enough, there'll be some, some bizarre wrinkle that I'm not anticipating, but as a general rule, you can ask for the information, you just can't engage in the deliberative process.
Okay.
So, because the, the public's entitled to hear it. So, yeah, email is not always your friend. Any other questions?
No, I'm just, one comment, I'm, I'm gonna be a little different than everybody else when, I'm gonna be, really be looking for, for you to be able to help us find ways to do things.
Sure.
And keep us out of jail, do them legally, you know, but...
I'm all about that.
Well, you know, the, just, just, if it's zoning things, or things that we might have messed up over the years, and we have to find a way to try to fix them, to make things right. And, you know, the answer's always been, no, we can't, and the, the citizens aren't looking for that, they're looking for, find out a way that we can do it legally.
Sure.
And, and make things happen.
No, and, and that's one of the great things about small towns, and it sort of relates to what I was mentioning before, is that, you know, it's, how can we do this, not, let me tell you the 27 reasons that you can't, or that we can't, because it's just annoying.
I like you already. We're there, we're together.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Item number two will be proclamation for Municipal Government Works Month. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. We have a proclamation, Municipal Government Works Month, November 2019, for your consideration. Proclamation, Municipal Governments Works Month, November 2019. The mayor and council of the town of Emmitsburg proclaim November 2019 to be Municipal Government Work Month, whereas the town was established in 1785, and whereas Maryland is the home to 156 other municipalities, and whereas municipal governments represent the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to each official, and whereas, in the effort to educate citizens about municipal governments and the importance of their participation, the town of Emmitsburg is proud to promote municipal government awareness. And whereas municipal governments have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents, maintain natural and historic sites, structures, helping to make Maryland a great place to live, work, and play, and explore. Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and council of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland, do hereby join the Maryland Municipal League in declaring November 2019 to be Municipal Government Works Month. This requires action, sir.
I need a motion to accept the proclamation as presented.
I make a motion to accept the proclamation as presented.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, second by Commissioner Burns. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays? Motion carries five to zero. That's it for administrative business. Consent agenda, we have one appointment for the consent agenda?
Yes, if I may, for consideration, the appointment of Mark Long to the Sustainable Communities Board, they're, they're the board that looks at the grant money with the planner, the grants we get each year for, um, doing facade improvements downtown. And to date, we've probably about nine hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements have been down to the downtown for this program. Mark Long is a member of our planning commission, he's also serves on our Green Team.
All righty, I need a motion to accept Mark Long as the Sustainable Communities Board, Community Legacy, will you remember? Pointy? Is there a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Davis, there's a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ritz. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Now, I'm gonna have some appointments for next month. How do I do that?
And when we get to the agenda items at the end, we'll just add them into it.
Gotcha.
Good for you.
Treasury report, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President. These are the figures as of, sorry, these, this is cash activity as of October 29th, 2019. Five million, five hundred seventy-seven thousand, six hundred three dollars cash balance on October 1st, 2019. On deposit, there were four hundred twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars, withdrawals in the sum of three hundred sixty-six thousand, nine hundred five dollars. The operating balance forward was, rather is, five million, six hundred thirty-nine thousand, four hundred twenty-eight dollars. Below, you'll see the top 10 checks, we have staff on hand if there are questions related.
Quick question?
Commissioner Burns?
As far as the solar fields, I might be new to this, we're paying out for the solar fields?
So, this, and I'll try my best to explain it without my notes in front of me. So, um, we pay for the solar, what's used, um, monthly, and then at the end of the year, we get reimbursed for whatever excess was not used. So what you'll see is, nine times out of 10, you're never gonna see a Potomac Edison or First Energy bill on here, because our First Energy bills are very low, because it's all being done via solar. So, the large amount of payments are to the solar, for the solar usage. And we'll get more into this when it comes down to budgeting, or we can even, you know, if the board would like another brief update on solar, we give a breakdown at the budget meetings to, to show the energy costs and the solar costs and the reduction in fees.
Which when we switched over, we've saved at least half of our electric bill.
Yes.
Because all of our buildings are solar, and all of our lights and stuff have been changed over in town to LED, so we, we're saving a substantial amount than what we had before. And then I think the, we have a couple of our community buildings are also on that. I do think we need another presentation, since we have two new members on the board for that, if you can get one put together for that.
Okay.
And that'll, that'll catch them up to speed on the solar.
Right.
And our average balance runs around five million, something?
Your operating balance.
If we see it go below, where do we go, oh crap?
I, you know, I don't have that number. The former town manager gave me kind of a breakdown, I have to pull that back out and see where the, the red flag waves, but we're not anywhere near the red flag.
Okay.
But I can work on that, too.
Just so we don't get caught by surprise.
In nineteen, late 1990s, we did have a red flag where we went broke.
Oh, yeah, I remember that, yes.
We, we had to borrow money to pay the staff.
I don't want to see our water get shut off.
We don't want that to happen again. All righty. Planning Commission report. Commissioner Ritz?
Yes, Planning Commission met on Monday, October 28th. At that meeting, Ms. Joyce Rosen still was voted in as vice chair to fill out the remainder of Commissioner Davis's term. He was the vice chair of the Planning Commission, and that is until January, per the code, the elections for the commission will happen at that time. The big ticket item for that night was that the Dunkin' Donuts site plan was approved conditionally. They did not get off easy, about 23 conditions, if my memory serves me correctly, but they will be able to meet those, and demo of the car wash should happen in the near future, with an anticipated opening of Dunkin' Donuts in spring of 2020. And I had it down as a tentative meeting, but I believe it is official now that our next Planning Commission meeting is on November 25th, this month. It's still tentative. Okay, so tentatively scheduled to meet on the 25th of this month to review the rudders' improvement plan. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for planning report?
A couple of quick questions, sure. The nature of the conditions, I saw one related to a safety railing in an outside area. Any other items you could share related to that, just sort of a, a summary? You don't have to go in one by one, if, if you don't feel that's, if you feel that's not necessary.
I'm glad I brought this.
Oh, good, okay.
It's not organized. I apologize, here we go. One was a, uh, street lighting photometric plan was going to be added, so basically a brightness study of the, of the lights, and how they affect the community, especially while Silo Hill's right, right there. The parking spots in front of the, currently in front of the building along Silo Hill Parkway will be removed. Stop sign and stop bar shall be added to the exit of the lot. Things of that nature, compact vehicle signs will be a, a section for compact vehicles. And... Is that enough?
Yeah, sure, okay. Nothing major or substantial.
I, I would say no, I mean, I, I opened it up to Zach, too, if he'd like to jump in as well. I'm sorry?
Yeah, I think that they were mostly minor things that were missed in the code, that they didn't, just didn't show on their plan, but I think what the Planning Commission came back with recommendation for the handrail for outside seating.
Yes.
I think that was a, a good recommendation from them.
So the nature of conditions, it's basically what's required in the code already, and we just find what they didn't add to the code, so we're not making up anything, it's just things that we find.
Terrific, okay.
And our engineer finds them.
The way the, just real quick, is the, the grassy area for outside seating, where it was situated, the drive-through, if, if a car were coming through the drive-through, it'd be like right, facing right into that area, so we're gonna, we're conditionally, there's the approval to put a barrier. Two reasons, one for safety, and another to sort of block that view, so people that are enjoying their coffee and donuts in the outside seating area wouldn't be seeing cars right through the drive-through.
Sure, sure, okay, thank you. Thank you, sir, thank you, staff.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I do have one.
Sure.
When the, when the car wash gets demolished, they have a storage tank that get taken out?
They're actually gonna keep that.
Recycled water?
Yes, they're gonna, just gonna keep that and just make it inactive.
Oh, okay. I do remember there was a recycled.
Yes, in the back there, left corner.
And just one question, Kathy, I asked you about this before, but just to clarify for the town as well, there was rumors, and there was thoughts going around that there was a surveyor going through, around the Dunkin' site, telling residents of Silo Hill that they were gonna have to build a six-foot-high privacy fence, and was conveying that message to them. Just want to clarify that that's not the case, and that Dunkin' will be building the privacy fence surrounding the property.
You're correct, yes.
Which all businesses are required to do, put a privacy fence.
Correct.
And buffer, and a buffer zone.
Right.
Yes.
Any other questions? All righty then, we'll move on. The regular agenda items. Bids of the ongoing sewer relining project?
All right. All right, as you know, last fiscal year, particularly last, over the last couple of years, we've seen our wild water increase significantly, which has put on an enormous pressure on our sewer line, not only our sewer lines, but our pumping station, it can't keep up. So, one of the projects in coordination, you know, in conjunction with a lot of the other things that we're trying to do, with the construction of the new pump station that we're moving forward with, is to continue to reline our sewer lines throughout the town, in an effort to reduce the amount of ionized, that's the inflow and infiltration that's getting into our sewer lines, which then increases the amount of flow that goes through our lines and then into the pumping station. So last year, the board approved the sewer relining on East Main Street. Staff felt that was the most critical line to be done at, at that particular time. This is a project, just like some other projects the board has supported, such as the rip, riprap at Rainbow Lake, we're looking to extend this to be an ongoing project that we do yearly, will determine the appropriate, or the most needed sewer lines, and just move forward each year doing piece by piece. So what we did is we put the bid out this year for a three-year or a multiple-year project, so it would extend from FY '20 to FY '22. And we got prices for 18-inch line and a 10-inch line, because that's what our sewer lines are throughout town. We received three separate bids for the sewer relining. We received from Humphrey and Sons for forty-three and forty-five dollars, Mr. Rehab for thirty-five, thirty-five, and thirty-seven, eighty, and US Pipelineing, sixty-three and seventy-five. And those prices are locked in for, excuse me, the next three years. So for FY '20, we're gonna look to do, which one is this, Creekside Drive? It's basically West North Avenue down through Creekside, down to the creek. That one's a little harder to see. It'll run from here all the way down there, it's probably easier to see on that one. The Creekside Drive Sewer Relining, and then the second part of the project would be the Memorial Park Sewer Relining, which is behind the post office to behind the school at Manhole Thirty-Three, so it'll go from behind the post office down to Manhole Thirty-Three. Manhole Thirty-Three to Thirty-Two was already relined during another project several years ago. So what we're looking for, hopefully from the board tonight, to approve the sewer relining project for the next three years, and that way we can lock in the prices... Staff recommends Mr. Rehab at, uh, like I said, thirty-five, thirty-five for the eight-inch pipe and thirty-seven, eighty for the ten-inch pipe. This is the same company that did, um, East Main Street earlier this year. And so for FY, FY twenty, the overall cost will be approximately a hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents. But again, we're looking to lock in these prices for multiple years.
I have a question.
Yes.
Where are you getting the hundred and seven thousand?
From the sewer fund.
From the sewer fund, okay. That's part of our five-million-dollar budget?
No, that's from, that's this, the five-million-dollar budget is your general operating, um, budget. You have an enterprise fund which incorporates your water and your sewer fund. Your water fund, right now, and your sewer front, fund at the, we have about, um, about twenty million in our sewer fund total. That includes all your assets, that not, that's not what cash on hand. But that's where it'll be funded from, from your sewer fund.
Thank you.
So the quicker we get this done, we're saving money.
Yeah, so we've already seen, and, and I think we talked about it maybe at the last meeting or the meeting prior to that. We have already seen a reduction in, um, the amount of wild water being treated, with the exception of when we have the music, just like we saw on Halloween with the fast, hard downpours. But we're seeing a reduction in the flow that's getting to the wastewater treatment plant. So this is just another piece of the puzzle with, you know, to work in conjunction, conjunction with the new pump station. You know, we all know our sewer lines are old and they're in need of relining.
Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, sir. Um, process, this is the same, like, uh, sleeve, steam goes in, it expands.
Yes.
And they cut out connections, if there are connections that need to be cut out.
Yes.
Timeline, process for these two projects, uh, if it were to start, let's say, December one. Do you think this would be done December thirtieth, along those lines, like?
Trying to remember.
One, one stretch at a time?
Right, we'd do one stretch at a time. I don't have the actual timeline for it. I believe the East Main project took a little over a week to complete, maybe ten days. There, you, you had to deal with a lot of connections and a lot of traffic. The, the portion behind, uh, or through Memorial Park, um, there's only five connections and, as well as FEMA and the provincial house. But, um, the impact to customers is minimal going through there. And then you also don't have to worry about, um, traffic control because it's all through, you know, there's no roadway through there.
And we're not doing much groundbreaking to, like, not, surface access. We're not digging from, uh, from surface down for much of this at all.
No, no, not at all. They, like you said, they, they send it through, um, with a camera, and then they send the liner through.
Usually they try to get it all, you have to do these all in one day because the, once the pipe hardens, you have to cut down these sections out with the, with the little, um, robot camera that they send through. So the first line, I mean, the one in Memorial Park should be probably one day with only the five connections. It's just they have to go to manhole to manhole depending on how many connections there is.
I just want to make sure if I get, sorry. I just want to make sure if I get a question from somebody, I can explain it, so there's no misconceptions.
Yeah, hopefully, it shouldn't take long at all, depending on how long the manhole sections are.
Thank you.
Let's have one more question.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
Uh, the one going through Memorial Park. You think that will help eliminate the backup we get at the manhole in Emmett Gardens?
Oh, yeah.
At the, uh, Kids Park?
It all helps. It all helps. That's one of the goals of doing this relining is to reduce the sanitary overflows. Fortunately, we haven't had a flow, overflow there for, for a while now, and I'd like to think that's, this is a big part of it. So, yes.
Good.
The sewer line that runs along the stream probably needs, we have also, but in order to do that, you have to pump around.
Which one?
A major pump, the one that runs along the stream.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't think that has been read on yet. Mr. Ritz?
Barring any unforeseen circumstances, uh, Creekside.
Yes.
I'm thinking specifically of the apartment complex, um, two things. One, has, um, Mr. Alloy been notified, the owner?
No, we, we don't, we're not even on their schedule yet.
Okay.
To, to begin. Um, I talked to Dan. He said on the Creekside Drive Run, um, there's nineteen connections. But not all of them would be affected at the same time, usually only about eight at, at one time. And then what he also said was that during the installation of the liner, that's the only time that you'll find a service interruption between the manholes. Anybody upstream and downstream wouldn't be affected because they will be setting pumps up as well.
Okay, so my next, my next question then deals with, um, the actual road itself, Creekside Drive. What about those individuals that live in that apartment complex that's the only way in and out back there? Would, would the road be temporarily closed while they're doing this?
No, I mean, they'll probably have flagging operations like they did on East and West Main, or East Main, excuse me. They did flagging operations.
It's pretty narrow back there, but you, you, do you feel that traffic will still be able to?
Yeah, I don't see a reason. And I asked, that was one of the kind of, uh, questions I asked was about traffic disruptions. And they think there's gonna be minimal impact, um, on Creekside.
Okay.
And they'll do, you know, their traffic oper, or flagging operations. And obviously, we will have a lot of advance notice on this, and we will get the word out as soon as we get on their schedule. I, I think we got on their schedule January, February of last year.
Good, okay, thank you.
And they're required by law to, to keep emergency access at all times. And also, um, they're required by law to give at least forty-eight hours notice before they do any of the sewer or the water. If you have a sewer or water hookup or turn off, you have, they have to, I mean, at least the company that I work with has, we give forty-eight hour notice at least.
That's good to know. Thank you.
That's the minimum.
It looks like you're supposed to be a porta-pot right here on your front porch, I think. I think you're gonna be good.
That's the one groundbreaking.
Yeah, it's right there.
Commissioner. So we need a, um, we need a motion to accept staff's recommendation for Mr. Rehab for a hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents.
Actually, if you could approve it, um, if you're okay, like I said, we'd like to do this as a multi-year project. We'd like to enlist the services of Mr. Rehab for three years because it will lock in their prices at thirty-five, thirty-five, and thirty-seven, eighty. If you could make the motion, the motion to accept Mr. Rehab and just the prices for the eight-inch and the ten-inch.
Of the thirty-five, don't worry about the hundred and seven.
Right. I mean, you can add the hundred and seven, but I just.
Cover additional projects in the future.
Correct. I mean, we'll certainly bring it as part of the budget. You know, we, we announced that we were gonna do this again in FY twenty. We'll come to you with, you know, the proposed plan for FY twenty-one, too, so.
Do you want us to include fiscal year twenty-twenty and fiscal year twenty, through fiscal year twenty-twenty-two for the pricing?
Yes, please.
Is it, so it's stated that way for the motion? Okay.
I need a motion?
I do, but I, I can do it after we make.
Okay. Um, I make a motion to accept the bid from Mr. Rehab, uh, in the, for the fiscal year twenty-twenty through fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, setting the fee for the eight-inch pipe at thirty-five dollars and thirty-five cents, and setting the fee for the ten-inch pipe at thirty-seven dollars and eighty cents, with the fiscal year twenty-twenty project cost at one hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents.
Is there a second for the motion?
A second, then.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, second by Commissioner Burns. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Can I ask?
Yes, discussion. Go ahead.
Okay, so let's say if this doesn't pass this evening, we're showing the FY twenty-twenty cost. Are, are you telling us, Ms. Wiltz, then, in twenty-one and twenty-two, we're still be at this rate, it won't, it won't go up? But if we only vote in one year tonight, there's a potential for next year for it to change.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Just clarifying, thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays? Motion carries, five to zero.
Thank you.
If you'd ever happen to see that sewer fund get enough money, we don't have to wait a whole year. Please bring it back to us so we can get, I mean, that's, that's a money saver. If we're, you know, it's, that'd be, it'd be dumb not to keep moving on it and getting it.
That'd make our staff very happy.
Social media, uh, number, second, uh, second agenda item, a social media management policy for consideration?
Okay, so, um, Ms. Shaw and, um, took a webinar that was sponsored, put on by MuniCode to go over, um, social media management. They've seen the uprise in lawsuits from particularly municipalities that were restricting what people can and cannot do on their social media pages. What comments, or do you have the ability to block users? What, what can you and can you not allow on your manage, on your social media page? And then I took, um, a class at the MML Fall Conference on the social media also, and it's, it's a very hot topic. I'm just gonna highlight some of it. If you have any other questions, we can go back over it. Basically, this policy sets forth guidelines for the town of Emmitsburg's use of social media sites as a means of conveying the town's information to the public. It's basically, the sole intention of it is to disseminate information from the town, about the town, to the public in a, in a civil manner. And that's page twenty-three. On page twenty-four, um, the gen, the general social media guidelines. So basically, your policy, Policy Nineteen O Five, goes through, um, some of the criteria. And then attached to that will be a visitor guideline and commenting policy. The town's website will remain the town's predominant, um, primary means of internet communication. Number five, um, I'm just gonna highlight ones that I think were very, were important to go over. The town shall retain full permission or rights to any content posted by the town, including documents, pictures, videos, or any other electronic content. The town's social media sites are public record and subject to the Maryland Public, uh, Records Act. The town's social media sites are primarily used to disseminate information. The town reserves the right to terminate to, town's social media sites at any time without notice. The mayor and/or town manager may direct the deletion of a social, social media account that is not being utilized or is being underutilized. Number twelve, any person posting to social media sites maintained by or representing the town of Emmitsburg consent to the visitor guidelines and commenting policy attached, which is Exhibit A, which is on page, starts on page twenty-six. And these are basically the guidelines that, um, have been set forth that came through MML and also, um, through several attorneys. Basically, it's the guidelines of commenting policy. Number one, comments or content, um, while the town of Emmitsburg welcomes comments and feedbacks, please be advised there are certain guidelines users must abide by that are listed below. And this would be paid, posted on the top of our Facebook page, um, in the About section. Comments or content containing any of the following inappropriate forms of content shall not, shall not be permitted and are subject to the removal and/or restriction by town. And it basically goes over language, profane, obscene, violent, pornographic, anything that, um, promotes or perpetuates discrimination, anything that perpetuates violence or threats, anything of sexual content. No solicitations of other business, um, illegal activity, anything that's copyrighted. If you don't have permission to use it, it can't be on our page, um, and any conduct that is in violation of any federal, state, or local law. Number two, the town reserves the right to restrict or remove any content that is deemed in violation of this policy or any applicable law. The town manager has sole authority to authorize a removal or deletion of content based on these guidelines. Any content removed or deleted will be retained as screenshots, including the time, date, and identity of the poster. On page twenty-seven, um, just a note that we don't monitor our social media pages twenty-four-seven. If there is an emergency or you need anything from the town, you need to contact us directly or nine-one-one if applicable. This page is not intended for use as a, uh, official communication with the town. If you want to file a complaint, if you want to file a claim, if you need assistance, um, because it's not monitored, please just contact us either by phone or email. Each type of social media organization maintains the terms of use of their agreement. You still have to abide by those. One of the things that they drive home is that your social media, it's a public forum. You have to be very careful when you restrict any comments or users from it because then you are, um, restricting their freedom of speech. So, um, this is a guideline, management guideline. So everybody knows what's gonna be, what is allowed on our pages, but then our staff also knows what's acceptable, so.
Commissioner Burns?
Uh, along those lines, obviously, it, it's stated that it's public record, uh, when the town of Emmitsburg posts anything, whether it be Facebook or anything like that. If that is then reposted to something else and things spiral out of control, uh, what, what liability is the town at since they essentially created the conversation? Or is that a question for the lawyers?
That's probably a question, that's a, that's a very good question because it does happen so often with sharing. That's something that I'll have to look into and get back to you on because I'm not, I'd like to ask her.
Yeah, it's just, it's curious because at what point are you able to then take that down to calm the situation, whatever that may be, versus allowing it to continue to spiral out of control?
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have one. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You're up.
Have we had any comments removed from our town's social media sites?
No, we have not.
So everybody's behaving, so to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So they're, they would still fall under the guidelines, uh, in their policy?
Correct, yeah. We, we have not had any problems that would fall under, uh, we would restrict your comments or eliminate your comments. We're just protecting, you know, the town in case that, that day comes.
Understood.
And to take the burden off of any other staff, it's gonna fall on the town manager's shoulders to make that determination whether or not we're gonna delete a comment.
And then you would, um.
Document it and notify it.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, sir. Um, do we have any means by which there is an agree-to click, like a digital signature? Or something that's a little bit more protective of the town? Other than, you know, one accepts the requirements the town puts forward, like the assumed?
Well, I think you could put a caveat, and I don't think you can, you can click it. I think, you know, it's, it's through the social media, as their terms and use of agreement basically says, by using this, you follow their rules. You know, and we'll put, when we post ours, that, you know, by commenting on our page, you accept these guidelines.
Okay, the other two, sorry, go ahead.
Essentially, Facebook, Twitter, everything has their own standard guidelines that are judged by those individuals. So Facebook has their own set of guidelines that they judge, Twitter has theirs that they judge. And so it's, the individual, like, town of Emmitsburg, town of Therman, cannot necessarily set forth their own rules to follow. They have to be then followed by what was set forth by the individual's social media sites.
We can follow theirs, but we can also limit what we put forward, though. That's kind of what I'm looking at. Like, if someone asks us, hey, could you please retweet this, or could you please post this on our behalf? That's when I think we need to better indemnify ourselves with the, I agree to, or the digital signature saying that we understand, you know, as the person asking, that once that message is pushed out there by the town on their behalf, they understand they have that liability, that they have to comply with us, with our message. Like, I mean, we, we say it very clearly here, and I like the language that we're using, that basically it's, um, for the purposes of the town to communicate. But that, that extra layer of protection, I think, there might be value to it. The, the other side of it is just, you know, changing gears altogether. The other question would be, um, I think you were at the same event at MML where they talked about the social media, and outside source was saying, we're gonna do an event in this town. And it was perceived to be a very popular band, when the reality was it was a tribute band. And they were seeing, like, likes in hundreds of thousands as opposed to likes in, you know, hundreds.
Right.
Do we have anybody who is actively monitoring our digital footprint, like, on a day-to-day?
Uh, yes, Ms. Ray does. She will search anything she can, uh, hashtag Emmitsburg, you know, anything that she can think of that might be related to the town.
Terrific.
She has brought some things to my, my attention that we were not aware of.
Great, okay, that's, uh, good. Thank you. Glad to hear that.
And you say this, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, our attorneys looked at this and they're good with it?
Yes, yes.
And you all did the training?
Yes.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Any other questions? I don't have any. Um, I need a motion to accept the policy for social media management.
I'll make the motion to accept the policy for social media management.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, our second.
Our second.
Second by, excuse me, Commissioner Davis. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any nays?
Can we go with one discussion item? Because I didn't vote?
You didn't vote?
There was no discussion.
Oh, yeah, we can have more discussion.
Can we back up to that?
I didn't hear you. I thought you voted.
Okay, I, I didn't speak up. I was waiting for the opportunity through. I was waiting for the opportunity through discuss, any further discussion?
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, sorry. Robert's rules, I'm trying to play by the rules. Okay. So I'm looking at number four on page five of five. A slight modification, but an important one perhaps. Number four looks like it might need to be number one. In that, the 911 piece?
Wow. That's number one. Oh, number one is about the comments. We can, I mean, we can reorder that.
I, I would consider that only because, and, and I'm literally defaulting to your doctor's office message. If this is an emergency, hang up, call 911. The other pieces I wouldn't say please, I would direct. I would just say, you know, if this is an, if this is an emergency, call 911.
Okay.
So, so we're, we're directing action as opposed to soft-shooting it. Mr. Sweeney, thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion? So we need to revote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
As modified?
Aye.
As modified?
As modified.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. You're not modifying, you're just changing the number. I mean, changing the-
No, we're, we're dropping the word please.
Kathy.
I'll let you all start on this.
Your wife will. I'll let you start. You have your manners.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Would you mind revoting on that item? Mr. Ritz has a question, and I'm kind of, just want to make sure everyone's voted and everyone's heard on this. Just want to make sure procedurally, we're following the procedure.
Well, I think you have to withdraw your motion.
You're going to have to withdraw a motion because we done voted. Withdraw the motion.
I didn't, I didn't make the motion.
Oh, Mr. Burns, you have to withdraw your motion.
I withdraw my motion to vote on the approval of the social media management policy.
Mr. Davis, you withdraw your second?
Sure.
Okay. Motion's been withdrawn.
I will make a motion.
I thought it was discussion. You want, you want to make another motion? Do you have a question or you want to make another motion?
I was going to proceed with making a motion to accept this policy as modified. Wherein, hopefully would be seconded. There could be some discussion if, if needed, and then a vote wherein all, all commissioners' votes could be heard. Correct?
Okay. The modification was to move number four to number one, correct?
Yes, sir.
And to?
Drop the word please.
Drop the word please.
Yes, sir.
Anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Okay, now make your motion.
I will make a motion to accept policy number P-19-05, the social media visitor guidelines and commenting policy as modified.
Is there a second?
Our second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of the 140 South Seton Avenue subdivision process for consideration.
Okay. We are at the end of the line for the 140 South Seton Avenue subdivision. Just for background for the residents, the proposed project consists of subdividing this property into two separate lots. Since this is a town-owned property, the Board of Commissioners must approve the process of the subdivision before we record the plan at the Frederick County Courthouse. The current lot is .479 acres, and the subdivision would create lots one, which is .2274 acres, and lots two, which is .2516. Basically, we're chopping the, the property almost in half. Lot one would front South Seton Avenue and consist of the single-family dwelling with the, the very small garage. And lot two would front South School Lane and consist of the large garage. The town would like to sell lot one and keep lot two for storage for the public works and the sewer and water departments. As you can see, the Board of Appeals approved the variance unanimously on September 9th for the rear yard setback, and the Planning Commission also approved it unanimously five to zero on September 30th. So we're asking for the approval tonight, and I'll go to the courthouse tomorrow.
Is there any questions for Zach from the Commissioners?
No.
Looking for a motion to accept the approval of the 140 South Seton Division, subdivision project, proposal?
I move to approve the subdivision process of 140 South Seton Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, second by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five to zero. Item number four. Is there something else?
No, sure. So this item is for the approval of the mayor and entering into a real estate listing agreement for selling the lot one. And it is, her resume is here on the first page, and then it goes into the specifics of the agreement.
So as the mayor said, he'd like to enter into the agreement with Cindy Grimes with JMB Real Estate to list and then sell lot one of 140 South Seton. The agreement that Ms. Grimes prepared was reviewed by the town attorney. If you'll see, there's a couple scratch, scratch-throughs and notations on there. They were just recommended changes or strikeouts from, from the attorney.
The listing price is $160,000?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that what we're selling it for?
Well, that would be your listing price. That's what she recommends listing it as.
Open to questions?
Yes. Commissioner Burns.
So Grimes set the listing price, correct?
Yes.
And upon approval this evening, are we approving the sale at 160, or are we approving what exactly?
What you would do would be approve the mayor to negotiate the sale of the house with final approval coming from the board. So basically, you would give the mayor the authority, as offers would come in, to negotiate, and then, once an offer has been obtained, then he needs to bring it back to the board for final approval.
Sell it with all our approval.
So-
Yeah, he can't sell it without your approval.
Correct. So 160 is the listing price, and then it'll be negotiated down from there at whatever point in time.
Or maybe negotiate upward.
Or whatever.
Up, up, Mr. Mayor, up.
We'd love to see it go up, but given, given the current pricing market right now, it's, it's difficult. So it would automatically come back to us once any kind of contract was-
Correct. Yes. The board would have to review the contract and give the final approval for it.
Our attorney would do that first, too. Just to mention, I, I have been a broker in the state of Maryland for over 40 years, and also in the state of Pennsylvania for 25 years or something like that. And we, we, the input of two different realtors on this, and for a lot of reasons, we kind of went with this, this one realtor, and because they've really had a lot of activity up here in the land that we've noticed along Main Street and downtown, in the area. She sold over 70 houses this year, which is a pretty good year. And I am not a part of this as a broker. I just wanted to put that out there that that's, I like, you know, there's real, real estate speak, you know, kind of stuff you get into. And, and we do have some things we have to improve the property, get it prepared for the sale. But we wanted to do this step by step to get it here, present to you, so we can move this along, get it back on the tax rolls. It was purchased back in 2006, the whole total property for $326,000 for a parking lot. And, and it's set there, and we've, we've dealt with it in the sense that we've treated it as a residential property, and we made improvements for the, you know, the asbestos, we made improvements for lead paint, all kinds of things. So we're, it's, it's taking a little time to chug it here, to get it here, but the engine's pushed forward, and we like to go ahead and put it on the market.
Mr. President, I have a question for the mayor.
Mr. Ritz.
I'm just trying to remember the process and how this works. $160,000 is the listing. So let's say somebody, potential buyer, offers a lower amount. Don't we, as the seller, have X amount of time to, to come up with a counter offer? And we don't, we do, if we do, if, if we're limited in that timeframe, if that's the case, would we be calling a special meeting of the board then to, to discuss that, that price?
I would like to negotiate a price with them, subject to your approval, no matter if it's in 30 days or whatever. And if it, if it called for a special meeting, we'd, we'd call for a special public meeting to, to do that.
Okay. All right. Wait, no, never mind. I, I, I'm, I'm fine for now. Thank you.
Any other questions?
You mentioned still work to be done?
Yes, we have, we have some issues in the, in the basement.
Is that budgetarily coming out of the town, or has it already been budgeted into it?
We, we budgeted it in for a possibility of adding a bathroom, but $10,000, we're going to see how it works out. We, we have some water issues in the basement.
The property's not currently occupied?
No.
Mr. Sweeney?
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Is there a backflow device there? All kidding aside, do we have that in the building?
It will be. It will be once we finish the work.
It will be? Okay. Very good.
It'll be sold with it on.
And the other piece is, there, there's no fire sale priority to unloading this property. We're actually just marketing it. Is that correct?
Right.
There's, there's no urgent need for this funding?
No.
No. Very good. Okay. So we do have time and latitude, it sounds like.
We'd like to pay off the balance of that loan that's probably about, this would put it down in it.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Davis.
With it sitting there empty, it is costing us money, though.
This is correct.
So we want to keep moving.
Right, yeah.
And I think that's what they're trying to do, just trying to get it done, so to get it sold. We were supposed to put a municipal parking lot, that's what we bought that property for in, in the mid 2000s, because there's hardly any parking for towns. So that was the closest spot we could get. It never changed after that. So I need a motion to accept, to give the approval of the, for the mayor to do the negotiating for the 140 project.
I'll make the motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner O'Donnell. Is there any other discussion?
Um-
Commissioner Ritz.
Just, yeah, $160,000 is, is hopeful. I hate to be pessimistic. I, I don't think that we're going to get that for it, but here's hoping.
Well, he can't sell unless it comes back to us.
I, I understand. So I feel, I feel we might be having a special meeting.
Probably.
Mr. Ritz, I'll say that by don't thinking, you think we're not going to get that, are you saying we're going to get 180 for it?
Nice try.
We'll be optimistic. We'll be optimistic.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays? Motion carries, five to zero. For consideration, the Board of Commissioners will determine if town code 17-20-090 at the late, so 600 East Main Street, extend requests during a rezoning process, October 1st, 2008. We do have somebody, we bought the property, is that where it is?
Yes. So just a little background for the new commissioners, at their, at your meeting on October 1st, 2018, the board approved the rezoning of this property from low-density residential to neighborhood commercial. The board also reserved the right to approve or disapprove future conditions of the property, such as looks of the signage and the looks of the fencing. The property has sold and will be commercially occupied, and the gentleman, Mr. Phelan, is here tonight's insurance firm. Therefore, the board must review the proposed commercial district buffer. So also, I want to talk about the zoning classification of the neighboring property at 514 East, East Main Street. This is Creosote Effects. This is literally right beside it. This was also changed from low-density residential to neighborhood commercial during the 2015 comprehensive plan update. So in order to reduce potential noise and light pollution from the commercial districts abutting residential districts, the Board of Commissioners in 2015 unanimously, 50, adopted the commercial district buffer, which is town code 172090. So just like we were talking about for the Duncan, where a commercial zoning district is adjacent to a residential zone, a buffer zone is required to be provided by the commercial property owner. So that involves a six-foot-tall solid fence along the, installed and maintained along the property brown, boundary, which I'm showing here in red, which is the requirement. And then also landscaping will be installed and maintained to screen parking areas, so not to be visible from roads within the adjacent residential district. And this is this area right here. I did not include the area here because it's heavily located with trees. This area is open, and you could see the proposed parking from 11. So that, that's the requirements of the code. Mr. Phelan is here to answer any kind of questions. He did provide the proposed signage, and it, we believe it would be appropriate for the area, which I can provide a picture, which you guys can pass down the line.
I think we have some public comment on this, right?
Yes, Mr. Phelan is here. Correct? Who wants to speak?
It's just a proposal of-
Is this the same as the other item?
This is actually a little bit different. I just received this today. We're, this is something that's near and dear to my heart. I've been in business 25 years here locally, born and raised in this area. And the dying wish of a, of a fellow Emmitsberian by the name of Tom Topper, he said, no matter what, you always keep an insurance agency in Emmitsburg. So I'm very pleased to look to try to perpetuate my agency here that I've had for some time. It's our intent to take what has been kind of a rundown piece of property and really make it very, very nice. But yet have it be classy, you know, and well-done, and hopefully an asset to the town on the east side.
So you're, you're going to put a new insurance agency there?
So I have my insurance agency now on Creamery Road in the Bollinger Construction Building. So it's just essentially a move. I, I've been at several locations, but this is one that I've purchased. I hadn't found the right opportunity to purchase. So I've been at everything from Silo Hill, from where, right beside where the subway is, to, to then out where I'm, it was across the street, and the, in the twin buildings that are right along Route 15, and then moved into the Bollinger Construction Building. So it's been here for a long time.
For the Maryland insurance, is that what it is?
Yes, sir.
So the next step of this plan would be going to the Planning Commission for a site plan approval. And they also have to get stormwater-
There's a small, there's a small vestibule that I'm looking to put out front. It's roughly five by, it's, it's not very large, but it is, would, would just make it look a little bit more commercial. And then it was our intent to use the proper, the impervious or pervious, whichever, you know, so that we were, we were good with any stormwater management and that type of thing. It was in my intent to have my staff parking out back, and then for client parking to be in the front- for client parking to be in the front of the building, which is at the top, top of that picture. So really the proposed parking in the back is only for my staff.
So you're looking for us to approve the fence and the buffer zone?
So I, as I've said, and I'm gonna go on record as saying, the fences, I'm fine if we have to put up a fence, but I'm also fine if we don't, it doesn't, it's my intent to be a good neighbor to everybody that's there, this is my hometown. So if we're, if the fence is required, we'll certainly have no problem, I have no problem abiding by that, but if it's not required, then that's fine by me too.
I, I believe our policy requires it, because, because we changed it in two thousand fifteen. Other businesses that came in since, you know, when I also had to put fences.
Yes, sir.
Buffer zones.
No problem, yep.
Is there any questions for?
Any other questions?
Mr. Sweeney, just to clarify, so the Board at this time, we're trying to determine...
What would...
The, the, the separation with vegetation, the fencing, I'm afraid, I don't have clarity on what it is that we're precisely trying to determine.
What, what the Board needs to essentially vote on, since your code does require fencing as well as, or the commercial buffer requirements of fencing and landscaping, the only thing the Board can approve would be type, so the code says it's gotta be a six-foot solid privacy fence, it doesn't give a good breakdown of what the landscaping has to be, correct? So, that's the only thing that the Board can, can essentially vote on as far as the commercial buffer.
Okay, and the question, I guess, opposed to Mr. Golden, is where the green line ends near where you have the text required landscaping, you say there's vegetation there separating, correct, the street there from?
Yes.
Property.
It's very heavily treed.
Okay, right, and then, I, I recall driving by there before the meeting to make sure I know what I'm talking about. Does the property owner have an obligation once on-site to maintain that, that barrier, like that has to stay, is that correct?
That's correct, and we also, for Mrs. Miller, we, we did a buffer here of fifteen feet because it is tight.
Okay.
They also allowed that back when Creosote Effects, I'm assuming the Planning Commission allowed that, so we have some giveaway there, but yes.
And we didn't identify, or the Board hasn't, sorry, the Planning Commission has the architectural guidelines recommending materials for fencing, but there's no requirements on our end, is that correct? It's just, the nature of the fence has to be a solid six-foot fence?
Yes, that's something you can determine tonight, that's one of the things that, why we brought it back, is you can determine if it's gonna be, you know, solid wood or solid vinyl, that are the kind of things the Board is allowed to approve tonight with the condition. Type of trees, for example.
All right, are there any other specifics that we're here to determine related to this?
No, sir.
Okay, so not the type of brush or bushes, not the vegetation, nothing akin to that?
Any vegetation, yes.
We do determine the veg, like we...
So if you wanna see shrubs there, yes, that would be appropriate, it's landscaping.
Right, but we don't determine, you know, elderberry versus something else, I mean, we're not, we're not going into that depth of detail, great.
No.
All right.
I'd like to hear from Mrs. Miller.
Yes. We do have public comment, Mrs. Miller?
Okay.
Did you come up to, oh, well, no, you have...
I think, I think you'll be able to hear me.
Okay.
I'm actually almost on the property line.
Just right there.
I'm twelve first Avenue, right there. To be honest, I don't wanna see any fence. To begin with, it's not going to stop the lights, because when they come off of Silo Hill, or even Jubilee Parking Lot, that side of my house, that, that we're backs up to their line, I've, in my rooms back there, I have a room darkening blinds, I then have shades of fog, I'm still getting lights there, and anything you put there is not gonna help. He said that the, it's only gonna be in the afternoons when the, when the people leave, when they're employees, it's not gonna affect, 'cause they go in, you know, they'll put their lights on and leave, in Jubilee, they'll sit any, and I have timed them, fifteen to twenty minutes to a half an hour with the lights on, and you can sit, yeah, I don't even have to put a light on in my house, because the lights are so bright. And I do would like to see, I know they've gotta have a light at the back, I know that, for the, where they come out and where the park, I'd like to see something on the building, it could be around the garage or something like that, that the light would shine down, would not be all, all over the place, 'cause I've got enough lights now, all the street lights and everything, today they took all the maple, the walnut trees down, and they were preventing, they were stopping some of the lights and whatnot coming into my house, now they're all down, and I have nothing stopping those lights. And there is a ten-foot easement, you've got to have that easement from there all the way down, because there is a pole on the right-hand side of my lot, and that holds the electricity, the cable, and phone lines, and they have to get in there and get to it, and that's the only way they can get out, where the, where you see the red going down, that's where it has to be. Now, the inner part of Emmett Gardens, it's a semicircle, the inner part of what I'm on, my electricity comes through Rocky Ridge, and then comes to my pole. Now, the outside, where the bakers and, and all around on the outside of that, is around, about the same way the town is, because there are times when one side, when we will have lights across the street, we're not. And, um, so I've got that. And to be honest, putting shrubbery or anything is not gonna stop the lights, because the house itself and everything sits up, and when you come in First Avenue or Second Avenue, it starts downhill. And the, like I said, if that's, if the toys are gonna park in the back, when they leave at night, that's it, during the, during the summer months, it won't even affect. In, in the wintertime, of course, with it getting dark early, they'll get in a car and they'll turn on the lights and leave, and that's it, you, you know, that, but now, and also, before I forget it, there's an eight, eight-inch sewer line in Emmett Gardens, and that was put in, that was installed in fifty-eight. My parents bought the house in fifty-six, 'cause I can go all the back, all the way back to forty-six until you used owned the property, and I've had it for over thirty years, so I can go back into that. Let me see, I think that was, was it?
So you're, um...
But I don't know whether, you know, like I said, the way it is, I, I know you say you've gotta have some, but there's been nothing there, there were, the trees were there, and like I said, now they're down, but it's not gonna affect me from them going in and out, because the lights are not gonna bother anything, as quick as they go in, they're gonna come out.
The red line is the fifteen-foot buffer zone?
Uh, the bottom here, so the property line's shown in yellow.
So that gives them room to work on utilities and stuff?
So what she's talking about, which I did not know, because the plat is so old.
Go come all the way down their lot, and in my house is, you have to keep...
Yeah, right there.
...going down further. You see the left-hand part of my corner lot, and then the right-hand side would be further down, and that pole is further down.
Yep.
It's on my property, it's, it's not, but they've got to use that way to get in, and when, see, we were not in town when we moved into, into, when we moved into the house, and the creek was where this town limit stopped. And of course, all of our measurements and lot lines, sizes and things were done through Frederick County, they weren't even done with what you all have here in town.
Miss Miller's been a great wealth of knowledge, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna bump this back ten feet to make sure that it's away from this easement.
Gotta have that, or you're, are you gonna have to fight with the electric?
Yep, we can definitely do that.
And the phone and the cable people.
Absolutely.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes, Mr. Burns.
Mr. Miller, you said they took down the trees, basically bordering your...
Yeah, well, if you look...
Closer to your property and the road, or closer to the house?
Right there, yeah.
Okay.
You see their driveway coming in, and the trees were on either side of their driveway going on out.
Okay.
Now, the trees where it says required, the R, there's still a couple trees there.
Yes, right here.
There are walnut trees, which are trip and fall hazards, you can roll your ankles so easy on those, they're kinda nasty, so they wind up being, they wind up being ruined.
The ironic part about it, Maryland State came around several years ago, and wanted to know who property that was, 'cause they wanted those walnuts, because they were going to replant them.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, use them, but those walnuts were good, I can tell you, 'cause my father used to crack them. Yeah, they were worth cracking, it took time to do.
Is there any other questions?
Whose responsibility is it to maintain the other side of the fence? There has to be a fence.
I think you have to maintain as far as your property line goes out, no matter if there's an easement or not, a lot of, there's a lot of places in town that have easements across the property, you still maintain that property as yours, but the...
We have to, even though there's the easement, we have to keep our, we have to keep grass cut and everything.
Yeah, for them to get in. How far is the property, is that the yellow one?
That's the yellow line, correct. But like you said, they would still have to maintain out to the road.
Yeah, you would have to maintain that buffer zone outside the fence.
I would like something low, if they have to come in First Avenue and come down something low, a hedge or something like that, if they had to come down where the green line is, if they wanna do, you know, that, but now...
That's not the purpose of it.
To be honest, that's no more than going out, and it's, it's not gonna do, do hardly any, it's not gonna do any, it's not gonna affect them.
Mr. Davis?
My problem is, here we're taking a neighborhood that has been there for sixty-five years, seventy years, and all of a sudden telling them we've gotta change something, nothing has changed, that building has always been a business, it's been a doctor's office, we haven't changed anything, and now we're telling a sixty-year-old neighborhood, you gotta change, and I, I just don't believe we should do that, we made a mistake, somebody made a mistake way back, you've heard this argument with me before, when we did all of our zoning stuff, we forgot about Emmett Gardens, 'cause Emmett Gardens was built and done with long before we made all these rules and regulations, and we're coming back to the same thing again, and we're gonna disrupt a seventy-year-old neighborhood, just don't think it's right.
But I do have to comment the town, I do appreciate the kiddie playground out there, they do, they use it, not a lot, but it is used, 'cause I know when we moved out there, there was a, a little baseball diamond and some other things when I was out there, and we, you know, the town, the Emmett Gardens used to have picnics and things where, where, you know, out that way, but the, the playground is, is nice and the kids do use it.
Mr. Sweeney?
Mr. Burns.
Mrs. Miller, so your objection's not to the fence, it's not gonna bother you either way if there's a fence there, or if there's a fence that is not put in?
I don't want the fence, period.
Okay.
Is it, where, where do you, do you not want the fence at, the long one or the short one?
I don't want any of it.
What about the other people that's on this side?
That's me.
That's him.
Two.
That's me.
You don't want the fence either?
See, it has it...
Up until a few years ago, they weren't even allowed to have any kind of fence in Emmett Gardens, not even a chain link fence.
Correct, but we changed the zoning for that piece of property.
But I like to see it just like it is, it was all open, it was a neighborhood, and it was family-oriented, and I, I would just like to see, see it like it is, just left like it is.
I know I was pessimistic earlier, this time I'm a little more optimistic, I know the argument was given before that, that potential site could be a, a business that had a lot of traffic, had a lot of lights, it could be deemed, deemed a nuisance, so flipping the coin, being optimistic, I'm hoping that Mr. Phelan's business is very successful, and that he stays at that location for a long time to come.
No Chick-fil-A?
I would like a Chick-fil-A in town, that's another site, though.
That would certainly be my intent as well.
Oh, what, I would like to know, and I know you did ask, the parking lot, what did you say it was going to be, I know it's not going to be blacktop, you said it was something else.
Mr. Phelan would probably be better, it's gonna be pervious asphalt, I believe.
It'll be pervious, which accepts the water, is that correct?
Yes, pervious accepts water, so it doesn't drain off, so yes.
Because when it starts to rain, everything rains down, runs downhill.
Well, they're gonna get the same kind of, of parking lot as the Seaton Center House, it's perv, pervious where it's, where the water will go down through it.
There wasn't any, they didn't get it, water didn't set up that way, that, you know, that was, that was okay, there was no normally any water up there, 'cause it was all running down the hill.
So the question I have, the, the risk relates to the commercial property's use in the future, now, it's great, Mr. Phelan, that you're here and that you're committed, and I, I don't doubt that in the least, okay, but the practical reality is that at some point in time, the property can and might change hands, and as a result of that, we might see a high-traffic facility there, and the thought was, in the original discussions, was to buffer that from the neighborhood to protect the neighborhood, now, this is good feedback, don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm, you know, I'm not laying criticism here, but what I'm trying to understand is, again, are we deciding related to the fence or the shrub, I mean, because it seems to me like our effort has been to protect and preserve the neighborhood as is, other than the singular commercial property, or rather, the double commercial property. And the, the, the very real fear I have is that, should someone come in with a great offer, and saying, hey, this is a useful place to me, I can make some more money here than this individual perhaps, and I project that, you know, I'll make X in the future, a reasonable person might take that offer, and then we're back to ground zero of, of spot zoning, I'm, I'm a little concerned about that, and I do wanna protect the property owners, and I do wanna protect their property values, so that's kinda where, where I'm coming from, I'd say, you know, I'll ask my, my perfect world question, I understand the, the fence isn't wanted, but were there to be a fence, almost, you know, paper or plastic, you know, wood versus plastic, I mean, just to give consideration to that thought, because I understand that you, you don't want the fence, you've been perfectly clear about, clear about that, but my worry again is, you know, in reality, someone might come along, Chick-fil-A could come along, you know, who knows, a business could come along and say, we wanna put a drive-through there, we wanna put this through, we wanna have a higher volume of traffic there, and, and that could cause harm to the neighborhood, so do we spot zone?
Can't.
Or, you know, where do we wanna go with this as a board?
Mr. Sweeney?
Commissioner Burns.
Am I, am I under the, am I under the understanding right now that we are not voting on whether or not the fence is going in?
No.
We are voting what type of fence it could possibly be, so the question really for us then, isn't about the fence, and I appreciate everybody's feedback on this, but essentially, we need to wait to hear back from the town, the...
But it's not gonna stop...
No, and I, I understand Mrs. Miller completely. No, Mrs. Miller, I understand that.
It's not gonna stop the lights and whatnot.
Correct, and I, and I completely understand that, and I, and unfortunately, I think that's out of our hands right now, and that's gonna have to go to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission's gonna ultimately have to make that decision on whether or not the fence is going to go in, I think unfortunately, the only, the only thing we can do right now is say, like, like Commissioner O'Donnell said, paper or plastic, is it gonna be a solid wood fence or anything like that, and in my, I, I might be wrong, but I don't think we can make that decision until the zoning, the, the Planning Commission has decided whether or not there's going to be a fence. has decided whether or not there's going to be a fence.
Correct, and plus it has to be moved, the fence has to be moved ten foot, correct?
So, so the code says that there has to be a fence, so when this goes to the Planning Commission, all the Planning Commission is gonna do is approve the site plan, the location of the fence, and the location of the landscaping. Because the way the code reads, they're not permitted to go against what the code says. So the code, they're gonna read the code and say, "See, okay, there has to be a fence, there has to be a commercial buffer. Does it, does it meet the code requirements?" And that's all the Planning Commission's gonna do. They don't have the authority to waive the fence requirement or the landscaping requirement.
Question then, that would go to the Board of Appeals?
Not, not, it could, but it would have to come from the property owner, not, not a concerned resident. It would have to come from the property owner that says, for one reason or another, they would like a variance, and they would have to show a hardship for it, which, that's up to the Board of Appeals.
Second question, if we don't approve this tonight, what happens?
He could put, he could put a fence up tomorrow. I mean, it's his property, he's within the code. He could do his fence and landscaping, well, not tomorrow, it has to go to the Planning Commission. So when he submits his site plan, then it'll go to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission will say yes or no, and it'll move forward.
So if we vote no tonight, it would still go to the Planning Commission?
Right, because all, you're not really voting no, you're voting on, as Commissioner Burns and Commissioner O'Donnell said, type of fence, type of landscaping. Because when this property was rezoned to this, to B two?
B one.
B one, made it a commercial property, which then required the commercial buffer. As with all commercial properties in town, they all fall under the same regulations. So this, this property normally, this would've never come to you anyway, because it's a Planning Commission thing to review.
See, the buffer is on the other side. That other piece of property is the commercial too, the buffer, their buffer is that little piece of fence at the bottom. That's their buffer. Do they have any on the side, or did they plant trees on the...
So they didn't have to plant trees in the back, because they don't, do not have parking spaces in the back?
But they do park back there.
Okay.
It's, I, I still think that what we're missing is the town made a mistake back in the seventies, or whenever, or whenever we changed that doctor's office to a residential. It should've never been changed to a residential, so there is a rule that the town attorney, the old town attorney, said that if we can prove that they made a mistake, which somebody did, unless anybody in the office now, somebody made that mistake. So that would've been grandfathered in under the old rules, because it was an existing business there. It's been a business since nineteen sixty-four. They never had a fence up there, they should never have to put a fence up there.
We're just, we're just explaining the code to you, that's all.
You know, what I'm saying is, the town made a mistake, we gotta find a way to fix it. That's, that's what I'm saying, that's what, we need the attorney back, that's why I need her.
This was her opinion, because we have reviewed this with Ms. Powell, and she absolutely one hundred percent said the board cannot waive the fence requirement. They cannot waive the landscaping requirement.
Did we tell her we made a mistake? The town made a mistake sometime.
When that came before the board, it was not the mistake that you're alluding to.
Sure it is, it's always been a doctor's office.
The board approved the zoning change and made it a commercial area, and when the board approved that, it fell, as we explained at the time, it fell under the commercial buffer regulations. All that we can do here is, is provide you guys the information and what you can and cannot do within the code.
So we can't fix something that we screwed up, that our forefathers screwed up, we can't fix it.
May I ask you a question? Is it, is it gonna be a requirement of me to put up a fence, and why be out of, will there be a violation if I don't put up a fence?
Yes.
That is part of the code.
Mr. Sweeney, maybe we can invite him up to the podium, so we...
Which we're not supposed to be voting on tonight anyway, so we're only supposed to be here for what type of fence and what kind of shrubs. Does anybody want to do that, because this has to go, the other part has to go to Planning and Zoning?
A, a suggestion for consideration related to the, the screening. Ms. Miller, if there were an opportunity to have more screening from the light from the parking lot, from, from the Jubilee parking lot, the only thing that I can think of, and I'm not a landscape architect, but I'm familiar with trees that we have on our property that we've had luck with. They were Leland cypress. They're, they're fast-growing, they fill out, and they, they do filter light very well, because that was a concern that we had, where we wanted to have some light knocked down. That would take away from the openness that you're, you're talking about, but at the same time, you would have a green barrier there, but it would be, you, you're not gonna lose the leaves like you would with the trees that were cut down.
Now, where would you, I, I understand what you're saying, but where are you saying to put them?
If the property owner were amenable, he could put it on the other side of the property line from your home, so you would have a screen between the proposed parking and your home.
She doesn't want that.
Well, we, we know that we don't want a fence, but I'm just saying for consideration, and that's why I'm asking you.
Well, that's for Planning and Zoning to do.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just putting it out there as a possibility. I'm just, I'm just looking at that as a, a means to solve that problem.
And you're talking about putting it down...
Here.
Where they took the other ones out.
With your property here?
Yeah.
Okay, they could, as a suggestion, and then there's no obligation. If this is where a fence were to go, they could put it on the opposite side of the fence, apart from the fence, so there would be some screening there. And these start at about twenty feet, fifteen, twenty feet, and they fill out. And if you set it up in a proper pattern, you could block your view of this, block your view of this. You wouldn't have the open view that you like, I'm aware of that, but it would give you some screening from the light.
Well, see, the trees that they took down, of course, in the summertime, it did some of it.
Right.
But even as tall as they were, it's still shot, it's still shown here.
Sure, sure, sure.
So, because we sit down low and they're up high. When we moved, that was nothing but a farm.
Right, right.
High Hill was nothing but a farm, and it all just came downhill.
So is there any, anybody wanna discuss the shrubs or the fence? What kind, what type? Vinyl, wood?
I would... I, you know, I don't want any, but I would rather have the tree or some kind of shrubbery as opposed to a wooden fence, even though I don't want that.
How many houses are there? One, two, three, four? Is it four lots on the, this side?
One, two, three, four, and then mine is five.
On the east side of the property.
So everybody else doesn't want the fence either?
He doesn't.
Just two of you?
And one doesn't, is, is vacant. And the Mosers, I know his wife is sick, so I, I can't. And his is just the, the corner, that's it.
Well, we cannot do that at this meeting. This has to be done at Planning and Zoning. We can only tell you what type of fence and what kind of shrubs. I'm sorry to tell you, but...
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes, Mr. Burns?
Rezoning process that was discussed on October first, two thousand eighteen, is that something that could then be brought up again at some point in time in the near future?
It could be, but I think this man's already bought the property, wants to put, open it up, and he has to get his buffer and fence up, so he can get some...
How quickly is it required?
In my case, the rehab is gonna take into the spring of two thousand twenty.
So how quickly is the fence required?
So it has to be in place before we give the occupancy permit.
So essentially, six months at this point?
I don't know his timeline yet.
If he's saying, if he's saying...
Six months or less, but I, I can't envision it being much less than that, just by virtue of the...
Okay, so six months, essentially six months from now, we have, we have an opportunity within the next six months to readdress this situation that was the rezoning process on October first of two thousand eighteen.
But doesn't the, doesn't the owner have to request it? Not the, not the people who don't own it?
For...
I'm kinda confused.
Yeah.
For, for, to, if, if the board was to rediscuss the rezoning process that was, according to this, on October first of two thousand eighteen, is that something that has to be requested from the homeowner, or is that something that the board can bring up amongst themsel, amongst in a town meeting?
Well, I don't think there's anything you could rezonate to that would allow him to still put his business there. Because it was rezoned from residential?
R one, yeah.
Yeah, R one?
To be...
To, to be one at that meeting to allow that property be sold to a dentist's office, which then the dentist ultimately did not purchase the property.
Doctor, doctor.
A doctor's office.
Doctor's office, okay, dentist.
And I, I just got a quest, I don't know whether you can, can you ask the, the town attorney again? Let him know, you know, that we were not in town, and things were, you know, all jumbled together. I, I know you said, she said, "No." But make her aware that when it was done originally, that we weren't in town or anything, it be grandfathered in, anything like that. Can we check with, can you check with them and find out?
I can certainly ask her, and I can certainly let her know your request.
Because it's been there, you know, seventy years, you know, like that.
Right, ultimately, you know, we have to, at least at the staff level, we have to follow what the code says, and then we can certainly relay the recommendation of the town attorney to the board. I don't know if it makes a difference or not, but I can certainly ask her.
I can briefly address non-conforming uses. So six months after that doctor stopped using that office, it's no longer grandfathered. It automatically goes into the residential purpose. So regardless, Mr. Phelan would've had to come give a site plan, so the fence requirement would've been required regardless, unfortunately or fortunately. So even though it was a business in the eighties and nineties, they only have six months after that ceases.
Where does that come from, Zach?
The zoning code, non-conforming uses.
So if a house goes vacant, what's it turn into?
It depends on what the zone is, so for example, for this exact example, any kind of use, so if it was a, a factory, six months it closes down, you can no longer have a factory there in the residential zone. It has, it can only be those uses permitted in the residential zone. So a doctor's office couldn't have went back in there without the board approving the rezoning process last year.
And that reapproval was based upon the request of the property owner.
Correct.
Correct.
So it, it was their request that they came forward seeking that. So it, it wasn't us trying to take anything away from them.
Well, we, we just keep affecting the same neighborhood over and over and over again. That fence sitting out there in center field is the dumbest-looking thing that I've ever seen in my life. So we're, we're making policies that, that we're not helping people, we're screwing up their properties. I mean, that fence there does nothing for that lady next door there, I mean, just sitting there. It's the only fence at Emmett Gardens. It, we're just, it just doesn't make any sense. We had to make a mistake somewhere, and we gotta be able to fix it somehow.
We, we spent a great deal of time on this this evening, and there's been discussion that the town attorney has reviewed this. However, the town attorney did not know some of the history of the development. I'm gonna just throw something out there that, even though we did spend some time on this this evening, what if we moved, to move this for discussion in, I don't know, January or February, to revisit it?
We still can't change it.
Do, do we have to? Mr. President, do you feel that we have to make a...
You have to do a zoning change to do anything?
Do we need to vote on it this evening, though?
No, the only thing we can do this evening is vote on what type of shrubs and what type of fence.
Because even that, per the agenda packet, I had no idea we were voting on what type of fence and shrubbery. And I just found that out this evening.
But why was this brought before, before, to begin with?
Because it was your request at the October meeting, that once this property was sold, that you could review the...
Oh, correct.
Fencing and signage.
We did.
And I think that was, Ms. Miller was here at that time as well. So I can certainly ask her the question with a little bit of the background and see what her opinion is.
Well, if she, she can always call me, and if I can't get to the phone in time, I can, if you leave a message on my recorder, I can get back with her.
All right.
Sweeney, can I ask you a question?
Mr. O'Donnell?
Thank you, okay. So to clarify some things quickly, for staff's benefit, the property owner of the, the medical facility seemed to be potentially an insurance facility. Were this to be tabled tonight, does that stop anything of that process moving forward?
No, if he wants to submit his plan to the Planning Commission and, and begin work once it's approved, he owns the property, it's certainly within his right.
Correct, okay, I, I'm asking these questions to bring sunshine to the issues. Okay, so it, it sounds to me like the board is interested in revisiting the policy related to zoning. Is that correct, related to the board? Mr. Davis, is that right?
But the, we, in order to do that, this man had bought the property, which was zoned commercial, so if we change the zoning, he can't put his business there.
Well, I, well, I think the piece, Mr. Sweeney, I think the piece that would be revisited, wouldn't necessarily be the rezoning of the use of the property, but the rezoning of the restrictions related to the property, such as the fencing and the shrubbery, the, the vegetation. Do you follow, so it's not the whole thing changing, if it, if, if it were to happen, but rather, it's giving consideration to modifying the, the buffer and barrier piece.
Then you'd have to do it for rudders, you'd have to do it for all the other businesses?
You're absolutely correct. And, 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 again, that's, that's, that's the sunshine piece that we're talking about.
Along those, along those lines, you're saying rudders and Dunkin' Donuts are neighborhood commercial? Are they zoned B one?
Any kind of commercial, so it's B one or B two.
Okay, so, but this is something that could then be addressed by the board, is there a different, is there a difference between what is B one and B two for something of that nature?
It's the uses proposed, the uses allowed.
Correct, I, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, your rudders, your Dunkin' Donuts, they're B two?
Rudders is B two, Dunkin', yes, both B two.
So obviously, larger, but the insurance brokers in Maryland is gonna be zoned B one. That is something that could be addressed by this board and reassessed as far as what the quote-unquote, uh, rules on the zoning and the buffer zones are and everything of that nature?
Well, both could, quite frankly.
Both could, absolutely, but especially in this case, B one could be reassessed.
Does that have to go to Planning and Zoning first?
It would have to go through the whole process, so you would have to push it over to Planning Commission. Well, first, you'd have to direct us what to do, what you want, and then we'd bring it back, you push it to Planning Commission, they would review your recommendations. It'd go back to you for a public hearing, if you're talking about changing the commercial district rule.
But the problem is, is that still gonna stop him if he wants to put the fence up tomorrow?
He can, he can put a fence up tomorrow if he wants to.
If he chooses to, it's within his purview.
Yeah, or the next person that comes, if they wanna put up the fence, they're more than, I can't stop them.
And I, and I realized that, you know, the comment was just made a little bit ago, you know, if we do it for this, then you gotta do it for rudders, you gotta do it for Dunkin'. I just feel comfortable, because it was also brought this evening, that even though the town attorney looked, looked at all this, just, just for her to, to have a little bit of a history lesson that maybe she's not aware of. And just, 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 just to review, it would make me feel...
She went off, she basically went off what the code said.
Exactly.
She was given the situation and reviewed the code, and that's the opinion that she gave.
It's just, this whole area is, I agree, it's, it's unique, it's a unique section of town.
One could argue that anywhere, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you, but also, if you go across the street for seventy years, that was a farm. If you go further out toward Pembroke Woods, that was a farm, Brookfield was a farm or an orchard, sorry. But it, it just, we, we've gotta be careful in our, in, in this notion of spot zoning.
I, I know, and we don't, we can't, exactly. However, the lots in this development are a lot different than the lots in other areas of town.
I, I agree, I agree.
I only have about three feet, give or take, from my property to his. And on the other side of my house, I only have eight inches between my lot and, because that was, the other lot my aunt purchased. And when she built that, there's only eight inches difference from my property to her house.
Good Lord, Sarah, don't tell us that.
But they're not gonna put it on the eight inch line.
And I can go back to forty-six, when Silver Fancy Farms had it, and I knew...